Good evening, I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is precisely 5:30 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This meeting is officially open with a quorum present. We will now move to our pledges which will be led by our Senior Communications Officer, Barbara Griffith.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would testify that I would lead the duties of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We are going to begin tonight with Board and Superintendent comments as we continue to mourn the passing of our dear colleague, Trustee Daphne Brookins. Words cannot express or describe our shock and our sadness when the unexpected news came to each of us on Friday. In fact, I think some of us are still processing this loss today. Trustee Daphne Brookins was a champion for every child, every day, all of the time. Her work on their behalf began long before she joined this Board of Trustees as a representative for District 4, and let's all remember the big shoes of Dr. T.A. Sims that she filled without missing a beat. As I shared last week, Trustee Brookins was a much-valued colleague, and she was a dear friend. The sheer beauty of her smile lit up any meeting, any room, any gathering. Our thoughts tonight are with her family and will continue to be in the days and weeks ahead. I'd like to invite my fellow trustees to briefly share any thoughts they may wish to add as we look at the many photos we've gathered over the last few days of Trustee Brookins serving children and doing what she loved. Do we have anybody that'd like to punch in and speak? Trustee Evans?
Thank you so much. I don't have any words, but it was such an honor to serve with her and serve students, and her loss will be felt for a long time.
Thank you, Trustee Evans. Trustee Dar?
Daphne was a true servant leader. She led through her actions, through her words, through the way she chose to live her life and in all of the ways that she impacted so many people. Mine and Daphne's lived experience was very different, and yet we appreciate who...we appreciated each other for who we were and what we brought to the table, and I am grateful that I had the opportunity to learn from Daphne. I will miss her as a colleague, but I will most especially miss her as a friend.
Thank you, Trustee Dar. Trustee Martinez?
Daphne and I served together well before Fort Worth ISD. We served together in community action partners, and that's where I first saw and learned her passion for serving youth, serving families in Tarrant County. I'm glad you mentioned her smile because I just remember like how she would light up the room and sometimes her comments would just make us all laugh. She had a great passion for serving youth. I remember the many years that she worked with Rising Stars Leadership Academy and just how she loved to talk about that program. And then a few later, a few years later, her and I went on to serve together or work together and through Leadership ISD Fellowship along with Q. And I just remember us talking about our legacies and what we wanted to...how we wanted to be remembered and what we wanted to leave behind, and I just remember specifically her talking about wanting to empower youth and serve youth and help families, and that's how I always remember her. I know that's how many of us will remember her, and I'm just...she will be dearly missed, and there will be a huge void in our community. But I just want to say it's been a privilege to serve with her the short time I have served in Fort Worth ISD, on the Fort Worth ISD Board, but we go way back, so she will be deeply missed.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. Trustee Quentin Phillips?
Yeah, thank you, President Jackson. Yeah, so much like Roxanne says, she definitely will be missed. You know, this...hearing this news and seeing our friend and colleague gone, it's been it's been tough to even truly register the realness, the fact that it really has occurred. And what Daphne's life has now been able to teach me as I've been reflecting over her passing is that how very much I take for granted, how very much I take you all in this room for granted, that I'm just gonna see you again, and I'm just gonna talk to you again, and we're just gonna be together again, and things will be business as usual. But, I mean, we just truly never know how long we have, and so, I mean, you know, while sending my love to Daphne, sending my love to her family, just really makes me realize how much I have to cherish these moments that even we have together, because we don't we don't know, you know, I mean, we really, we never really know. So, you know, with all of the other things going on, with bickering and strife, and I mean, none of this, none of that really amounts to anything, it's the human lives that we get to be in contact with. It's an it's an honor that I got to share space with Daphne Brookins, that I got to be a part of her life in some way, and I just no longer want to take that for granted with any of you as well. And so, I thank her for everything that she did for her community, for this board, for her family, and the lasting legacy that I know she will leave with me, to not take for granted these relationships and opportunities, and to actually cherish them, because we don't know when it'll be our last, so. Much love to the to Daphne's family, and I just truly hope they know that in any way we can be of service and of help, that we truly plan to do exactly that.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Trustee Anil Luaybenos?
Thank you, President Jackson. Daphne was a colleague on the board, she was also a friend. I will miss our weekly phone calls to talk about education, the programs that we were thinking about, and to talk about life. Besides a colleague on the board, she was a good friend that will be deeply missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Luaybenos. Trustee Dr. Michael Ryan?
I've only known Daphne for six months. First full school board meeting we had, we had 96 speakers, and when it was concluded, I was sitting there going, talking to her, so I don't know what I got myself into. And she said, "Just remember that everybody here that's talking cares about their kids, and all we've got to do is do what's best for kids."
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Dr. Scribner?
Thank you, President Jackson. As the her colleagues on the on the board are all expressing, we were deeply saddened by her loss when we found out on Friday morning. She was an individual always focused on students, always focused on their families, focused on making sure they had the resources that they needed, both inside of the school building but also in the school community. She her focus really was about creating stability for the for the families that she served, many of whom lived within challenging circumstances. As a person, she is even-handed, steady, authentic, a real, real human being, and recently lost her husband as well, so let's please not only keep the the families and students and faculty of District 4 and all the district, but certainly her sons, keep them in our prayers as well.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner, and I just want to add that Daphne was working on, before she was hospitalized, on some STEM academy work for each school. She was working on bringing in partnerships, so we hope to continue that legacy, and we have Tiffany Bynum right here who was mentored by by Daphne, and I hope that we can continue that work. Dr. Scribner, would you like to speak of Mr. Matic?
Yes, yeah, we've had another loss as well, and we'll be participating in the Celebration of Life on Friday for Stephen Matic. It's with great sadness that we also learned two weekends ago of the passing of David K. Sellers Elementary School Principal Stephen Matic. Although Mr. Matic has successfully battled health problems over the past few years, this was completely unexpected and has hit the Fort Worth ISD family and the David K. Sellers family hard. Please keep all of them and Mr. Matic's direct family in your thoughts and prayers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. At this time, we'll move back to recognitions with Barbara Griffith.
Thank you, President Jackson. November is Native American Heritage Month, a time to honor the rich histories, diverse cultures, and important contributions of our nation's first people. Fort Worth ISD is observing this month-long recognition with postings on social media, activities, and events, including one this Saturday, November 13th, at Briscoe Elementary. Organized by the district's American Indian Education Program and Family Engagement Specialist Pamela Bennett, the event will feature Choctaw Stick Ball, Native Dancing, a guest speaker, and concessions. All families are welcome. Our American Indian Education Program is awarded federal funding from the Office of Indian Education. The program currently serves approximately 336 Native students. The goal is to ensure they learn about their heritage and successfully complete high school, prepared for higher education. The program includes field trips and a summer camp that features cultural activities and crafts, such as weaving, pottery-making, cooking, and archery. The program partners with Fort Worth ISD faculty to identify and assist Indian students across the district with academic as well as social and emotional needs. It also works with parents to provide support and referrals for services if needed. Fort Worth ISD's American Indian Education Program is dedicated to giving students the opportunity to achieve whatever they dare to dream, and we'd like to ask some of our guests tonight to stand and be recognized. Elizabeth Gravel, Fort Worth ISD's American Indian Education Program Liaison. Also, any families and students in the program who are present? Also Pamela Bennett, the Family Engagement Specialist at Briscoe Elementary, who has organized this event this Saturday. And Briscoe Elementary Principal Davana Burgess is also here. That concludes our recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. At this time, we will hear public comment. Let me remind you that because of restrictions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with one, a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry, or three, direct the person to visit with staff about the issue. While this board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should practice normal rules of decorum. Vulgar language and profanity cannot be tolerated as this is a public meeting and our students are watching. Additionally, disruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated. We ask the audience to refrain from interrupting speakers while they present to the board during this portion of the meeting. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. This evening, we ask that you keep your presentations to one minute unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. I ask that you please observe these rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner. For those who are speaking, sanitation wipes are available at the podium. Our first speaker is Angel Martinez. Okay. Second speaker is Jennifer Crossland.
Hello. At some point, I'd like more than a minute, maybe next year, this year, sometime, we could get three minutes, because it's very difficult to make a point in 60 seconds when you prepare three minutes. But tonight, I want to talk about the bond that we just voted on and the language that you used on the website, talking about the bond being a tax, not a tax rate increase, that was very disingenuous and incorrect, because as property tax values increase, we pay more dollars of taxes to the school board, and you know that, and you use that language to trick people, which I don't think is correct. And luckily, I went to school in the in high school in the 90s in Arizona Public School. Luckily, it was before Superintendent Scribner was there, and I actually learned in economics class about there's no such thing as a free lunch, so to say that we can have a $1.5 billion bond and not increase taxes is not correct. Someone's got to pay, and it's going to be us, and I really would like three minutes next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Malik Austin, followed by Carol Gornieri. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to just quickly address the fact that out of the four bond proposals, three were defeated. Proposition A is still in question, although as of this afternoon, there was probably about a 50-some-odd vote margin. Let me remind you that 50 votes is not a mandate from the voters. We came out in record numbers, we defeated those three bond proposals, and that should send a message to you all that you are not addressing the needs of the students. We beg you, we plead with you, to teach our children how to read, write, and do math. Dr. Scribner's agenda has failed. The bathroom, debalical masks, all of it.
Thank you. Ladona Myers, followed by Holly Clemmons.
When you have to send Grandma out to tell you, "We're going to hell in a handbasket," we're way down the line, guys. On the bond issue, we had to vote no money because there's no trust. We have to start at the top, and we've got to have a new direction. We have CRT, absolutely nothing but racism, and teaching children to hate themselves and others. Since when have qualified professional educators been willing to stand behind such? And sex is for adults, only pedophiles teach sex to children. What you're not teaching is reading, writing, and math. These children are so far behind, they will not be able to fill out an application for employment even though they have a diploma from this Fort Worth ISD. That should scare all of us.
Thank you. It's up to you if you'd like to speak when the agenda item comes up, you may, or you can speak now. Which do you prefer?
Can I do both? Do now? If the agenda item later? Not the agenda item now, so you've got something else?
Yes. Yes, one minute each time, correct? Deal? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Holly Clemmons, mother of three kids in Fort Worth ISD. On 10/26, I brought to your attention that the SEL survey run by Panorama, quick background for everybody. Panorama is co-owned by Zan Tanner, who owns another company that sells CRT curriculum and is also the son-in-law of our Attorney General that is calling parents terrorists if they are against CRT. I let you know that day that you are illegally surveying our children and violating PPR A, but you did nothing to stop the surveys. You continued with this illegal data mining of our children. They are collecting personal information about our children without our consent. I was told that you feel that consent is given by the technology agreement. Do you guys want me to start a campaign to end the technology agreement and return the Chromebooks? Is that going to be the best way to do this? It's not. That's going to hurt our children, that's going to hurt our teachers. The best thing that you can do is work with parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Lambert, followed by Wanda McKinney.
Good evening. I sent everybody this email, but repetition is always good. Speaking in regards to the behavior of Norma Garcia Lopez, she has consistently been rude and caustic as well as racist towards parents who have diligently been fighting for the rights of their children. God made each of us, and He loves Norma just as He made and loves each of us. God made each of us, and He loves Norma just as He made and loves each of us. Anyone who has more than one child knows that even as we love each of our children, we do not allow one of them to mistreat another. I feel Norma has issues that prohibit her from seeing each of us as valuable, and therefore has no place representing racial equality. After all, singling out certain folks of a different allotment of melanin is an oxymoron to equality or equity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Scribner, President Jackson, and board members. Again, I'd like to offer my sincere condolences to you and the passing of your fellow board member and colleague, Trustee Brookins, and I pray that the Lord will bless you and keep you as you go through this very difficult time. Racial equity work is more important now than ever, more important now than ever. But we now have the unique opportunity to fund this work through the use of millions of dollars of ESSER funds, an opportunity to turn the tide, an opportunity to begin to pull students out of this academic black hole that has been decades in the digging. It didn't start now, it's been decades in the digging, and there is no way in six years that this could be turned around by Dr. Scribner and the board, because it's been decades in the digging. An opportunity to position students for success. You have that opportunity now. Dare I say, this is a one-time opportunity with a limited timeframe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Poole will be followed by Dee Taggart.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Scribner. Ms. Griffin is passing out our annual salary comparison that UEA does for the past 28 years. You'll see where Fort Worth ISD ranks for the teacher salary comparison among 32 school districts here in North Texas. And this work doesn't happen by accident. Your rankings there were because of the support of voters last fall with the TRE and your commitment to employees to improving employee salaries. It's nice to see that Fort Worth ISD ranks in the top five of every category of teacher salary, except for starting salary, where you rank sixth. But you have to realize where we came from. Last year, you ranked 15th for starting salary, and this year, sixth. So, big improvements, but it's also like tending a garden. You constantly have to do this and pay attention to employee salaries, teacher salaries, so we can retain the highest quality employees, but also attract the highest quality employees into our district. And I know that's something that you're committed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Dee Taggart.
My mother often said she believed that I came out of the womb wanting to learn, demanding to learn. Nothing has changed. So tonight, I just thought I'd share with you, in addition to reviewing material from your racial equity arm of Fort Worth ISD, I have read over the last year and a half, How to Be an Anti-Racist, White Fragility, So Do You Want to Talk About Race?, The New Jim Crow?, Racist Without Racist?, White Rage?, writings, various writings of Richard Delgado. I've added the following words, some have changed definitions or phrases, to my vocabulary: critical pedagogy, meritocracy, implicit bias, microaggressions, intersectionality, white fragility, affinity groups, anti-racism, objectivity, subjectivity. And I still disagree with your focus on equity. I feel like I'm stuck in the Kafka trap, but I will find out, I will find a way out of it, and I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Malik Austin, followed by Kerry Raymeyer.
Madam President, what is the time for today?
One minute.
One minute.
Thank you for asking.
Okay. I want to give my condolences. Could you hold the clock, sir, please? Because I asked a question. Could you start my timer over, Mr. Clockman, whoever's doing it? But I want to give my condolences to Sister Brookins before I speak. For those who got an issue with this critical race theory equity, it's something I fought for, for my children. How dare you come out from here and talk about the things that my daddy and my grandparents went through, the lynching, the oppression, Jim Crow? And my kids are still being afflicted by this. How dare you come out from here and challenge me on critical race theory? Look at the word racism. This is something deliberately done to people of African descent, to shackles us down. This hate, fear, mugger ain't going to work no more. It's over with. We are not our ancestors. I've got over 1,000 soldiers ready to go.
We're not the board.
1,000 go.
Where are all of us?
I don't care.
There you go. One and done. One and done. One and done.
I received a message describing an equity training she had to participate in in Fort Worth ISD. We had to rate our whiteness in front of everyone. They had us answer questions like, "How often would you go without food?" Well, we had ate out of the dumpster every night when I was little. So we had food every night. He became very uncomfortable. I asked him, since I put myself through college while I lived out of my car, if that made me more white now than I used to be. To me, this sounds like a struggle session and has no place in our schools. It promotes division and re-institutionalizes racism. We should all be treated equal, not as oppressors or victims based on our skin color. I've got a white kid, a black kid, and two biracial kids in my household. So are they oppressors or are they victims? I'm here again to call for the removal of Norma Garcia Lopez. You all have known for a month the racist things she puts on social media, she has no place on a Fort Worth ISD committee. I want her.
Carlos Tercios will be followed by Angie Blake.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent and Madam President, Toby Jackson. I just want to give my condolences to Daphne Brookins. I first met Daphne when I was 17 years old. I invited her to the Black History Month event. She was a great speaker, she was a great individual. I had the opportunity to talk with her. She engaged well with the parents. And it was actually before she ran for office that, when I first met her, I realized, you know, she will be a great trustee, and she was a great trustee for all those years. So I just want to say that. The item I want to talk about is basically about the bond election. I just want you all to look at the voters, you know, why were they, you know, upset with what was happening with Fort Worth ISD? Analyze why did voters reject three of the bond propositions, you know? Check what their concerns or their frustrations are, and better analyze that.
Ms. Blake?
This board appointed a co-chair to the Racial Equity Committee, who is actually calling, cussing out, doxing, and threatening parents just because she doesn't think they have the right to stand up for their children's rights, and she doesn't think they have the right to force the school to obey what is currently state law. You all have been made aware of her actions, both verbally and in writing, and you still allow and encourage this behavior. That's bad enough, but now that person has the mental dysfunction to call the police and try to file a bogus report and claim online harassment because she doesn't want what she said to go public? All of these behaviors, both by her and this so-called leadership board, are cause for grave concern. I am calling for her and anyone on this board who justifies her actions to step down immediately. Get rid of Norma Garcia Lopez, get rid of Kent Scribner, and let's go Brandon.
Mike C. will be followed by Todd Daniel.
I'm going to give a moment of silence for Trustee Daphne Brookins. In honor of Trustee Daphne Brookins' passing, I will make this brief. You have a full-on racist in your racial equity committee who likes to use racial epitaphs and curse at parents via voicemail. She should be removed, if she hasn't been already.
Mr. C., that's not allowed to be played, I'm sorry to say. Please discontinue. Please cut the mic. Thank you. Todd Daniel.
I'm here again to make you aware of glaring deficiencies core subject grades, namely, in the district which, as elected officials, is your charge and ultimately your responsibility for its failure. With few exceptions, this board is wasteful, arrogant, and oblivious to the harm and terrible culture you continue to promote. Specifically, grades for core subjects are not preparing them for competitive world they will face upon graduation, for some. Misplaced emphasis in terms of money thrown away on cult ideology renamed as cultural awareness with wrong-headed irrational fears and adult phobias. These are not kids' real problems, you are. Current policy prioritizes psychobabble-driven data, data, data points and metrics that are cherry-picked for extrapolations to rationalize continued use are just exploiting and monetizing our children with poison indoctrination towards victim mindsets, creating segregation, dysfunctional populations in our student body. All this so warped adults here and trained in schools can continue to be...
Thank you. Lafayette Fruge, followed by Janie Ginn.
Yeah, David Lafayette Fruge, two kids in wheelchairs at Lilly B., elevator's not always working, not a lot of great ramps. Right now, the difficulty I'm having is I'd like to be able to put on a mask and just push my kids into school. It's kind of hard, because they got to go to two different classrooms. It takes the teachers an extra long time, so, you know, I'd kind of like to find a way to do that. I was told I can't do that, because other parents will want to, like, go in too, and I'm kind of looking forward to when we can all go back in. I like all of our schools, and I think it's cool that, like, our Fort Worth ISD is like twice as big as the city I grew up in, and they're just kids, so that's like a lot of kids. I think it's really cool. So maybe I could, Ann Dar is our representative, maybe I, no, I think so, but I'd like to just email and say, "Well, what can I do to push the kids in on their wheelchairs?" Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm just here to share in your sorrow. When the word came across, my email, that Ms. Brookins had passed away, I was devastated. She's been such a wonderful addition to this board, but more importantly, a really important advocate for District Four. I've worked in several of those schools over time, and she shared that same heart for the children in that district, and learning loss has gone on. I was so thankful she voted last year to start kids back early, even though she knew, you know, there was some danger involved in it, but she was more concerned with the learning loss that they were suffering, because those are some of our lowest-performing schools. And anyway, she said that she had grown up with two loving parents, and until she came here to work with America's Service Corps, I wish I could just...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ginn. Thank you. Time's up, I'm sorry. Thanks to each of you for being here with us tonight. Thank you for honoring our two fallen soldiers, because that's what they were. They worked it every day. And on that, I want to thank you for sharing your thoughts. This time, we'll call the public meeting, the public hearing, to order to discuss the consideration of the development of a District of Innovation Plan. Dr. Scribner, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you very much. This is a continuation of work that we started a few years ago, and at this time, I will introduce our Chief of Innovation, Dr. David Sines, who will take us through this presentation.
All right. Let me see the presentation.
So this public hearing is to share information with you and our public about the process to be designated as a District of Innovation. HB 1842 was passed in the 84th Legislative Session, which created Texas Education Code, TEC 12A. This allows ISDs to access most of the flexibilities available to Texas Open Enrollment Charter Schools. To access these flexibilities, a district must adopt an innovation plan. For some historical context of the last time this plan was passed, on October 2016, the board initiated the District of Innovation process by holding a public hearing held to consider the designation. In November 2016, the Board of Trustees approved the formation of a DOI committee, and in March 2017, the DOI plan was adopted by the Board of Trustees. The term of that plan was from March 2017 to March 2022, which means we have to re-up that plan and see what other options we have available to us. And that's why we're here today. The current DOI plan opted us out of Texas Education Code 25.0811A, which allowed us the flexibility in our calendar. Before then, as you can read on the screen, we could not begin instruction for students for a school year before the Fourth, Monday in August. This allowed us the flexibility to make adjustments to our calendar accordingly. In addition, districts around us and other districts have exercised other flexibilities. This is just a list of those flexibilities. This is not the proposal for the DOI plan, I want to make that absolutely clear. These are just some other options that other schools explored. Minimum minutes of instruction, the 90% attendance rule to earn credit for a course, teacher certification options for CTE teachers, and amount of excused absences allowed for college visits. There are many others. Those are some of the ones that were selected from surveying other school districts. The proposed timeline for the plan development this year is that, first of all, today, have this hearing today, and also the adoption of a committee to do so. It would be in December 2021 to have the first meeting of the proposed DOI committee, review DOI plans from peer or neighboring districts, establish parameters and constraints. January through February, we'd secure feedback from stakeholders and develop a plan. In March of 2022, we post a plan for public review, as a plan is required to be posted for 30 days before a board can take action. In April 2022, the Board of Trustees will consider approving a DOI plan. In the consent agenda item today, we have consent agenda item E, which is a proposed DOI committee, the District of Innovation Committee. We're proposing that that be the district advisory committee, much like it was last time around. This committee would be responsible for securing and reviewing input from internal and external stakeholders. As I've mentioned before, any plan developed will have to be posted for 30 days before the board can take action and ask questions about that plan as well. This concludes the presentation, and I'll open it up to questions.
Trustee Ann Dar.
Thank you, President Jackson. Dr. Sines, with the DOI committee, how is that committee selected? Who is it comprised of?
Yes, ma'am. So the proposal is that it'll be the district advisory committee, like it was last time. And so those members are chosen from teachers, community members, staff members from the district, as well.
Okay. And who chooses those committee members?
So those folks are chosen from recommendations from our principals, as well, and also from our... well, and, and also from recommendations from staff members.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen, you can augment that answer.
Trustee Dar, they're also elected. We have certain places that they are elected through the campus community or school communities and Senate. So, they're actually elected by different campus members, as well as our Fort Worth ISD family. It's a great representation, and actually, our friend, Mr. Poole from UEA serves on there with us as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification, because I think this is a critical piece in this process.
Definitely.
And I want to make sure it gets the attention that it needs and deserves, and it sounds like it is. Thank you.
No other questions. Thank you, Dr. Seines.
Thank you.
This time, we do not have any speaker signed up to speak on the development of the District of Innovation Plan, so we will close the public hearing. And Dr. Scrivener, I will turn it over to you for the next presentation.
Yes, at this time, we'd like to hear from our Chief Financial Officer, Michael Ball. At our last board meeting, the Board made the request to review qualifications for financial advisor service firms, and we're prepared to present that PowerPoint at this time. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, President Jackson, trustees, Dr. Scrivener. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity and the privilege to, to present this information to you. This report is about the financial advisor qualification process, and what we wanted to do is sort of a continuation of the discussion we had last meeting. Wanted to provide a little bit of history on this relationship, a little review of the, of the last time we had a, a selection process in 2018, and then just a little more detail and specifics about the process that's, that's been used this year. So, with that, I'll, I'll just jump right in, if that's okay. The history of the relationship with a, with a financial advisor firm, as far as, as far back as I could find, without a trip to a warehouse, we were able to document that from 2003 to 2017, we had one firm, and that was First Southwest Company. And that firm served as the financial advisor, at least during those times that we can document. We're told that the relationship existed even prior to that time. Then in 2018, a decision was made to, to have a, a selection process, so we did a, a request for qualifications in early 2018. The Board took action in, in January of 2018 on that, and the authorization was given to the superintendent, our designee, to negotiate and enter into a contract with, with two firms. That was Estrada Hinojosa and Company and RBC Capital Markets. And that agreement was executed February 27, 2018. It was a three-year contract that expired in February of, of this year, and if you'll recall, the Board extended that. It had two one-year renewal periods, and the Board exercised the, the option to renew one of those. And so, the, as we sit here tonight, that we're under contract with these two firms through February 27 of 2022, and there remains one, one-year renewal period, which, which, if exercised by the Board, would extend that to February 27, 2023. Then in, in 2021, as I mentioned, we, the Board took action to renew that, and although it was not part of the action item, we did give our word to the Board at that meeting that we would conduct a, a process in, in calendar 2021 to, to have a selection process. So, we did that, developed a request for qualifications, very similar to the process that we did in 2018. We advertised that in, in early August. The responses were due in mid-September. We had four respondent firms, which are listed here in alphabetical order. And so, upon receipt of those, those responses from those four firms, we had, we had a selection process or an evaluation process. We also wanted to, to provide just a very brief excerpt, and this, what you see on this slide is actually lifted right out of the request for qualifications. This is, is a summary of the scope of work. It really sort of is a job description, if you will, for a financial advisory firm. And one of the difficulties we have in evaluating the financial advisory relationship is, what they do is they provide advice. And so, there, there really aren't a lot of quantifiable metrics one can use to, with which to evaluate the, the effectiveness of that relationship. And you see what they do is they, they provide cash flow estimates, tax rate estimates, all of those type of calculations as we evaluate, refunding opportunities that come along, which are, which is the municipal bond term for just refinancing like, like one would do on, on a home mortgage, as an opportunity arises to refinance at a lower interest rate. And you see that third bullet there that has six or seven sub-bullets really has to do with all the paperwork and, and document preparation that's associated with a, with a bond sale, the, the credit rating questions and all those things that are associated with that. And so, here are the criteria for the evaluation. These were published in the Request for Qualifications, and the points that are, that are related to each one of those, I won't read those to you, but, but those are the, the, that's the basis on which our evaluation committee made the, the evaluations of the, the four respondent firms. And, and then you see down there at, at the bottom, that's, again, that's a quote lifted right out of the RFQ, and it, it just says that it was the intention to, to name one firm. That was what we, we advertised in the RFQ, but that the Board could authorize negotiations to begin with one firm if, if, if those negotiations are unsuccessful to go to the next firm and so forth. And that's the same, same criteria that were listed in 2018. And so, then, again, these are just quotes right out of the, right out of the RFQ. The, the top bullet there just tells you what the term that's anticipated that was advertised in the Request for Qualifications. It was intended to be a three-year contract, and as, as the Board will recall, we had this on the agenda in the October meeting, so the, the thought was we'd have a, a contract in place by the end of October, and thus, it would be a three-year deal expiring October 31 of 2024, with three additional one-year terms that, that the Board would have the option to, to renew. And then, the second bullet really describes what sometimes called a blackout period, which is simply, each respondent to this, by their signature on the, on the response, agreed to follow the, the instruction here, which is they, a, a proposer was not to have any contact with either the staff or Board members that, that had anything to do with, with this process. And so, that's a very common thing that's listed in our solicitations, that we, we do try to observe that blackout period. And so, here's the process. We've listed on this slide both the process that was used in 2018, as well as the one that was used in the current year. And in 2018, we also had a three individual evaluation committee comprised of people who had financial expertise. If the Board will recall, at that time, we had our, our Chief of Operations had spent most of his time, at that time, with the district in the finance area. He had been the controller at one time, and, and he was also a certified public accountant. And so, because of his financial expertise, he was invited at that time to participate on the committee, along with the Senior Officer for Budget and the Chief Financial Officer at that time. That's exactly the process we used in 2021, except we didn't have a Chief of Operations who was a CPA, and so, we, we, we selected the same positions. They're now different individuals, obviously, and we also invited the Treasurer, who handles all the district's banking relationships and the cash flows of the district. So, that was the committee we used in 2021. And those criteria that you saw on a previous slide are the criteria that these three individuals used to evaluate the responses, with the exception that the hub qualification is, is, and this is true on all of our solicitations for business, the, the hub eligibility is scored by our purchasing department, and then, in this case, pardon me, in this case, it's a yes or no question. And so, if, if, if a firm gets a yes answer as scored by the purchasing department, they get the full value of those points. If, if it's a no response, then they don't get any points. And so, that, that's how the evaluation process took place. And that's the same process we use for many of our other solicitations. And as, as we stated the last board meeting, the recommendation of the administration is that, that the, the committee unanimously selected the firm of Estrada Hinojosa and Company for, for recommendation to the Board. And the, the next couple of slides really are responsive to questions that came up in our last discussion. This slide provides the actual fees. We, we sort of read the, the fee structure in the meeting last time, but these are the actual dollar amounts. And the, these two firms really have agreed to split the fees evenly. They both get 50% of the total fee. The reason these, these amounts are not exactly the same is occasionally, one of the firms will, will upfront, provide upfront cash flow for a fee that may be required in a bond sale, and they get reimbursed that in addition to their 50% of the fee. So, that's why that, those numbers aren't exactly even, but, and as a percentage, those are all of the bond sales. There have been two refundings or refinancings where the, the district has refinanced the, the bonds at a lower interest rate without extending the, the repayment term and save significant interest dollars. And then, there have been four, what we call new money sales, which were just new, new sales of, of bonds to fund the construction programs that were approved by the voters in 2017. So, when you take all of the fees that our financial advisors have been paid, it's, it's .12 of 1%. So, that, that's a pretty small percentage of, of the total. So, that was, that was a question the Board had at the last meeting. And, and then the, and this is just a, a quote right out of the minutes from 2018, which, which is actually the motion that the Board approved in 2018, granting the, the superintendent, our designee, the authority to negotiate and enter into a contract, which is exactly the same thing that's being recommended tonight in the 2021 process. And we also wanted to sort of list out the options that we see that the Board has in, in taking action on this item. One is to, to approve the recommendation from the administration. That's fairly obvious. The, the other would be to, to select a, a firm other than the one recommended. The Board certainly has that option. The third bullet there would be to waive the statement that was in the RFQ that said that the district intends to award a contract to a single firm and select two firms. And a, a fourth option would be to reject all the responses to the current RFQ and, and at a later board meeting, renew the contract that expires in February of 2022. In essence, exercise that final year of the existing agreement with those two firms. And then, the last response that we see is to, is to reject all the responses and redo the RFQ. And so, and I think one, one other option that has emerged since we drafted this would be to, to select the, the same two firms that the Board has now and authorize the superintendent to, to negotiate a new contract with those two firms. And so, there may be other options. Those are the ones that we see and wanted to certainly communicate those and, and provide those to the Board. And then, that's just the repeat of, of the recommendation that we've already mentioned. And then, certainly, President Jackson, we'd be, we'd be pleased to address any questions that the Board may have on this.
Any questions? I, I have one, and it continues to be the same question. We've almost doubled the amount of dollars, and we've reduced the financial oversight by 50%, and that troubles me. And when I look at other entities such as TCC, Austin ISD, DISD, Houston ISD, DFW Airport Board, the City of Fort Worth, some of them with smaller bonds than this, and, and we were just gifted truly 80% of the dollars we asked for, for our kids. It will complete the secondary schools. I want public trust to be at a maximum. The formula was two financial officers, and it worked, or, or two financial advisors. Thank you. And, and I'm just confused as to why we would change.
Trustee Jackson, that's a great question. I, I don't know that I, that I can answer the question in terms of why other entities have, have to. I, I think in, in the case of Fort Worth ISD, there was, there was an effort consistent with our initiative to provide more opportunity for minority firms to participate. I think that, that had a large impact on the decision to have two firms back in 2018. And I think, while, while we certainly have no issue, Trustee Jackson, with having two firms, what, what I would want to say publicly is we have full confidence in the, the firm that's being recommended, which, which is Estrada Hinojosa, to do this work. They, they have proven that they can do it. That said, certainly, we have no issue. If, if the Board's pleasure is to appoint two firms, we certainly will enthusiastically endeavor to implement that as directed by the Board. So, so we, we have no issue with having two firms.
Thank you. Trustee Ann Dar.
Just one question. On the Options page, it says that the RFQ statement read, "The district intends to award the contract to a single firm." Who determined that?
That was my determination. We, the Board policy does delegate to the Chief Financial Officer the, the procurement process, and so, we, I made the decision to, to advertise for one firm. That had been the, the district's history for 15 years plus, and so, I, I felt like the coordinating the work had, had been a little bit of an issue. Nothing about competence with either of the two firms. I, I think loud and clear, I need, I need to say that both of the firms that we are under contract with now are very competent firms. What we, what we saw living through having two firms was that with, with an even split of everything, it was sometimes difficult to, to really establish who's in charge here. And, and so, our, I, I think what we would want to do, if, if the Board wants to have two firms, we're, we're, we're good with that, perfectly satisfied with that, with that decision, if that's where the Board is. What we would want to do is establish clearly through that negotiation process that the superintendent would, or designee would lead, is to establish who, who's the, who's the main advisor and who's sort of checking the numbers. And I think, I think that the entire team that, that participates in a bond sale, our Bond Council, our Disclosure Council, the, the two financial advisory firms, and, and our own internal team, the underwriter teams, all of those parties that participate in a bond sale, need to be able to know that this firm is in charge. They're, they're the lead, they're the lead advisor in these transactions. And so, that was learning for me, and so, I made that decision to go, to advertise for one firm.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I will turn it, thank you, Mr. Ball, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Scrivener for the, no, well not, for Lonestar Governance, correct?
No, I think the next presentation that we have listed is the annual comprehensive financial report.
That is true.
And with that, we'll turn it back over to our CFO, Mike Ball.
Thank you.
There you go.
So, this one is, is our audit report, and we, the, the Audit Committee of the Board just, just saw the presentation from our, our auditors. And, but, but before we start, I wanted to, to make the Board aware of, of one issue, just, just a sort of a housekeeping thing, and that is that the, the government officer, the, now I'm drawing a blank on what GFO's, Government Officers, Governor, Government Finance Officers Association, I'm sorry, the GFOA has, has determined, it's a, it's a worldwide entity, and, and our- And, and our financial statements are used worldwide. When we, when we sell bonds, our, our financial statements are likely viewed around the world by, by entities who purchase our bonds. And so we've, we've changed the name of the report from what it used to be to annual comprehensive financial report. It, it turns out that the letters used in the first iteration of that, used in the sequence they were used are highly offensive to some cultures around the world. And so the decision's been made to, to change that uniformly as, as we and many other governmental entities publish our financial statements. So that's the new, the new term that we're using. And we did want to just explain that before we start, if, in case you're looking at what it looked like last year. So that's really all the, all we did was change the order of those two first, those first two words. And so we, we are required to engage a firm of independent certified public accountants. The, the firm that the board has engaged is Weaver and Tedwell. We, we call them Weaver. They are a very reputable and experienced firm. They, they are engaged by many of the largest districts in the state. And Ms. Jackie Gonzalez, who's in the audience tonight, is the partner who, who leads the team on our engagement. She actually made the presentation to the audit committee and certainly she's available if the board has any questions later on. And we, we do have a deadline on this. The deadline is November 27th. It's 150 days after the fiscal year ends. So since our fiscal year ends June 30th, our deadline is November 27th. You may have some of your peers in other districts that serve as trustees. There are two potential year ends for Texas school districts. There's June 30 and August 31. The August 31 districts have a deadline in January, in late January. So if you're, if you're at a meeting and you hear your, your peers talking about they're still reviewing theirs, they're probably an August year end district. So here are the, the financial results for the general fund. We've added about $75 million to, to fund balance. That's largely attributable to the, to the federal ESER funds that we've gotten, that, some of which the state has used to provide hold harmless funding for us, for the attendance for the fiscal year ended June 30th, and some of it we have, we have used in the different categories of ESER money. So part of our strategy moving forward in the, in the time between now and when the federal money concludes is to try to utilize that as best we can to build our fund balance in anticipation of the day when the federal money will terminate. And so the bottom line is the district is in very good financial condition there. And also not listed here, but the debt service fund is also in very good financial condition. We have about 44% of the annual debt service requirement in fund balance in the debt service fund. So the district's in great financial situation. The board audit committee did meet this afternoon and received a much more detailed presentation from Ms. Gonzalez about the findings and the results and so forth. The audit committee did, did vote to recommend this report for approval tonight. We are required to seek action on behalf of the board or on the part of the board. The board is required to either approve the, the report or disapprove it. And we actually have to put a signature page documenting that in, in the report itself. And so it's our administration, along with the audit committee's recommendation that the board approved this item tonight. And that concludes the report and certainly be happy to address any questions the board may have.
Any questions? No questions, Mr. Ball? Thank you for two reports.
Thank you. And I will try to remember what GFOA stands for next time I'm at the microphone.
I think you're okay. You pulled it out of the cobweb, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up is the Lone Star Governance presentation. Dr. Scribner, I will now turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, President Jackson. At this time, we will have our Lone Star Governance presentation, Goal Progress Measure Update Goal Two, which is early math. I'd like to introduce both our chief academic officer, Marsha Sorenson, and chief schools, Jerry Moore, who'll take us through this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner, President Jackson, members of the board.
Do we have a copy of this presentation by chance?
I believe it was sent out to everyone.
Okay.
Correct? Okay, very good. All right. Before I do, before I get started, I would just like to recognize that unfortunately our associate superintendent, Sarah Rispey, was unable to be here with us this evening. So I will do my best to represent her well as we go through our data slides at the beginning of, of this presentation. As Dr. Scribner shared, we are presenting our Lone Star Governance Goal Progress Measure Update for Goal Two, Early Mathematics. If I can, let's remind ourselves of our board outcome goal for early mathematics. Our goal is to increase the percentage of third grade students who score at meets grade level or above on our star mathematics exam. You will see that, that green box identifies our 38% goal for this school year, school year '21, '22, reminding you that we did not have a star assessment in 1920. And as a result of our pandemic experience, we had 17% of our students meeting this standard in 2020, 21. You will notice that we have not changed our, our, our projected goals or the goals that we are establishing. We've done that purposefully as, as we go through this entire presentation and we're confident in the work that we're doing to recover from our lost learning opportunity for students that we will, that we will reach these goals this year. On the next slide, Slide Three, we're showing you a representation of the same information broken down by our student demographic groups as we will do throughout each one of the data, data points that we look at this evening. We'll go ahead and jump into our goal progress measures. We'll start with goal progress measure 2.1. Goal progress measure 2.1 is to increase the percent of pre-K and kindergarten students that score on track. On track meaning a, a standard that is on grade level on their circle exam, our pre-K examination, and their kindergarten exam, TechSkea. That's the math portion of this exam. You will see here that our goal is 86% of our pre-K and kindergarten students meeting that on track or on, on grade level target that we have. Break that information down for your student groups. You'll see that information represented here as well. And we would like to dig a little bit deeper into goal progress measure 2.1. We'll start out by looking at goal progress measure information with pre-K and kindergarten students together. And we'll also show you this information with both our English and Spanish speaking students together. And we'll do a comparison between where we were last year and 2020 at beginning of the year at our fall assessment compared to where we were, where we are this year in our fall assessment this year. You will see in 2020, we had 49% of our students at the beginning of the year showing that they were on track. This year, we have 53% of our students showing on track. I'll draw your attention also to the number of students that were assessed. You will see that we have around 600 additional students that were assessed this year. That's a representation of the increase in enrollment that we have in these early grades. Take this information and break it down. Wanted to share this information by our student demographic groups as well. You will see an increase from fall 2020 to fall 2021 performance in all student groups except for our African American group, where you were, where you will see that we stayed consistent with our performance last year, 50% of our students starting the year, testing at the beginning of the year as on track. Still on goal progress measure 2.1, we'll break the, the information down a little bit deeper for you. So let's look specifically at our pre-K numbers. This representation shows you a separation of our English learning students as well as our Spanish learning students. You will see that comparison between fall of '20 and '21, 69% of our students were showing on track. You will see that there is a slight increase in the number of students that we assessed in English this, this year compared to last year. And when you look at our Spanish performance, you will see a three percentage point increase from '20 to '21. I did want to point out the increased number of students that are in this Spanish demographic group. That is a result of our bilingual model and the number of students who are now receiving their math instruction at the, at the early grade levels in Spanish as opposed to in English. So just wanted to draw your attention to the increase in those numbers. Moving on to kindergarten, how did our students do on their kindergarten assessment at the beginning of the year last year compared to this year? In English, three percentage point increase, 40% of our students tested on track, on grade level at the beginning of the year. And in Spanish, 45%, a slight decrease from the previous year, but I'll draw your attention to those numbers as well, where you will see a significant increase in the number of students who tested in Spanish compared to those testing in English at the kindergarten Jumping over to goal progress measure 2.2, this is an increase to increase the percentage of grades one through three students that meet or exceed their projected growth on MAP Growth Math Assessment. You will see that our, our goal once again is identified in that green box for you. Our goal is 67% of our students meeting or exceeding projected growth measures on their MAP Assessment. We'll also show you, before we get into the student demographic groups, would like to show you progress that we saw last year. If I can draw your attention to this report, I think trustees, you will remember this report from last month when we were looking at early literacy. We wanted to move this report up earlier in the presentation. This is, if you will remember, this kind of purple or, or blue bar and then the gold to, to orangish diamond there. The diamond represents national norms, projected growth of students. The, the purple to blue bar represents the actual growth that our students demonstrated last school year during the pandemic experience where we had students in person and virtual. The growth that they demonstrated from beginning of year, from fall to, to spring of, of the school year. I, I draw your attention to this to show you that once again, we are meeting and exceeding growth targets. You'll see that in various grade levels, third grade, fourth grade, and then again here in seventh and eighth grade. Whenever you see that bar meeting or, or reaching that, that diamond, you know that we have met and exceeded national norm expectations of growth. What does this mean? This means what, as similar to what we said last month with you, when we focus on the right work, our students demonstrate that they, that they are growing with, with the instruction that we're providing them. As I said, we'll show you this information broken down by student demographic groups. This is goal progress measure 2.2 for MAP Growth, grades one through three. Digging deeper into goal progress measure 2.2, we would like to share information about beginning of year from 2020 and comparing that to beginning of year in 2021, this current school year, and then compare that to our national norms. This information is showing you how our students performed compared to those national norms, both from last year and this year at the beginning of the year. I will recognize that there is a slight decrease from our performance from last year. I'd like to remind this board that this assessment was given at different times this year than we gave last year. If you'll remember, we started the year later last year. In 2020, we did not give students this exam until middle of October. This year, there wasn't as much instructional time before we gave the exam. We actually gave this exam at the end of August. So that accounts for some of the change here as we gave this exam earlier in the year. Just to go through this real quick, we broke this information out for you by student demographic group at the grade levels that we're looking at first through third as well, and giving you that comparison to the national norm. So here you will see our performance in student groups for first grade, second grade, and third grade. One more, one more data point that I would like to draw your attention to as we look at goal progress measure 2.2 is this year, when we looked at our beginning of year MAP Assessment and we looked at our projected growth and the projection of our students to achieve meets grade level or higher on their star math assessment, we have a projection of 15% of our students based on their beginning of year performance. What does this information mean? This information means this conversation is going to be very important at middle of year when we come back and share the same information with you. Our goal will be to bring that bars and diamond report back to you and show you where our blue bar far exceeds the projected growth of our students at middle of the year so that we far exceed this 15% that was projected at the beginning of the year. We know the work that we're focused on this school year will, will yield us those results and we'll be excited to share more middle of year. Showing you this information broken down by student group as well, I will draw your attention. I think it stands out to all of us, the performance of our African American students in this representation, that's 7% these last two years. We wanted to, to call that out to this board specifically to let you know that we, as a school district, are aware of this performance and are focused on our attention for our students, especially our African American learners, especially in this representation of third grade math learning. Moving on to goal progress measure 2.3, this is our MAP Growth for, for kindergarten math. Our goal is to increase the percent of kindergarten students who meet or exceed projected growth on their MAP Growth exam. Just remind you that last year was the first year we administered this test. So last year was a baseline year. We had 37% of our students meeting the, or exceeding projected growth targets. You will see the green box with our proposed yearly targets here. You'll see a 3%, a proposal of a 3% increase each year for the next three years. So our target that we're proposing this year is 40% of our students meeting that standard. Show you that information again here, broken down by student demographics. Digging a little bit deeper into this, this goal progress measure, wanted to show you this information for our student, for our kindergarten students compared to national norms as we did on the other information. So you will see where we sit compared to that national norm, both as an aggregate and then in our student groups for our kindergarten students. So with that information, I would like to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Sorenson, where she will share information about our focus on implementation this year.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Dr. Scribner, and trustees. So this year is a focus on implementation and I want to draw the board's attention to that we have adopted a new pre-K curriculum, which really focuses on foundational skills integrated into daily instruction in our pre-K setting. As I mentioned last month, we have a newly designed K2 curriculum that is aligned to standards and is more rigorous than it was before. And just again, providing context, historically, we as a district spent a lot of time focused on 3-5. 3-5 is where kids were tested. There is a new emphasis on really spending time in the pre-K to two space to make sure that we have very strong foundational skills so that we are not always in this cycle of playing catch-up as students are being tested. We also have a very focused campus support plan for our tier four and five campuses that integrated really well with the campus improvement plans. And we met with principals to say, if you had to say to us as a teaching and learning department, what is the one or two support that you need that can move the needle on student achievement and teacher support? What would it be? So we have very focused plans with our tier four and five campuses around instructional support. We are also implementing MY PATH this year as an intervention in our K8 settings, again in full transparency, because I, I again feel that that's our responsibility as a board. This did not go well last year. We had struggles with fidelity of implementation across the district. Schools had spotty implementation of MY PATH this year. So working with Ms. Hernandez and the math department, as well as my partnership with school leadership, we anticipate that this will be much better this year in terms of using its intervention strategies. We have ongoing professional learning for our teachers and our administrators to support high-quality instruction in mathematics in our schools and of course, our extended learning opportunities for students like Saturday learning class, summer lunch, so on and so forth. But again, and I know that this will look very similar to you to last month, but I cannot reiterate enough that we cannot intervene our way out of this. The type of instruction that students receive every single day has to be of the highest quality, has to be rigorous, has to provide scaffolds and supports, but has to be grade level instruction every single day in every single classroom across Fort Worth ISD. So I also want to bring your attention to our forward thinking and our planning. So what the research tells us across the nation, not in Fort Worth ISD, but what our data tells us across the country is that math took a hit during COVID. Our parents at home could read a book to a child. They would expose them to text. They would expose them to TV shows or online programs that supported literacy. So across the nation, we didn't take as much of a hit in literacy as we did in math. So we also knew that we needed to do something different. So we also knew that we needed to do something different in order to support our mathematics instruction. So we will have a mathematics framework that will be released in June 2022, similar to our literacy framework. It will ground our district in high-quality, evidence-based mathematical practices, pre-K through 12. We are working with a national consultant to make sure that we are grounded in evidence-based practices for all of our kids, to make sure that we are addressing the learning needs of all students in Fort Worth ISD. There will be a realignment with the bilingual literacy practices and dual language models to make sure that we are supporting bilingual literacy and that we are honoring native language in our youngest grades with support for language acquisition as students progress through our system. And we're doing this, adoption of high-quality instructional materials with ESAR funding for K through eight, bless you. If we did not do this adoption through ESAR, we would not be adopting new mathematics materials according to TEA until 2026. So this is a strategic investment for us as a district. There has been an outcry for our principals and our educators to have new mathematics instructional materials in our K-8 settings, and so we're going to meet that need and we're going to meet that request. And with that will come ongoing professional learning. I'll turn it back to my colleague, Mr. Moore.
So as Dr. Sorenson said, I hope these last few slides look familiar to what we shared with you last month, and that's purposeful. As we told you last month, this is the year for implementation. We've been working the last couple of years of designing the plan, getting high-quality instructional materials, getting the right curriculum in place, professional learning and development for our teachers, and now we have to deliver on that plan. So I share with you once again our Fort Worth ISD strategic priorities for educational excellence. What are we staying focused on to ensure we're receiving that high-quality daily instruction in every classroom in every school across this school district? One of the items I'll point out to you today is item number four, create and model a data-rich culture on campuses focused on student growth and achievement. We're looking at the data with you this morning, or this evening, but this is not the only place that we're looking at data. We are very intentional about our data work with our principals. I draw your attention to this slide you saw last month around our Fort Worth ISD leadership priorities, where you will see number one on our leadership priorities is creating a data-informed culture with our principals, at our campuses, with our teachers. I point this out, this is our area of focus for our principals this month. We have principal professional learning next week, where we're digging into very similar data to what you're looking at today, not just in mathematics, but in all areas of the work that we're doing, K through eight, and then specific CCMR data for our high school principals that they will then take back in conversations with our teachers. So just wanted you to know that we continue to stay focused on this data, we continue to develop our plans, and we will stay focused on the implementation and the successful implementation of these plans to get the desired results that our students deserve and that this school district needs. And with that information, I will close the presentation and be glad to take any questions that this board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Trustee Jacinta Ramos.
Yeah, if we could go to page two, I want to start there. My first main question is, on the goal that we have, we're at 17%, knowing that that's not, to be blaming our educators, they did the best that they could with what they had during the pandemic. If we had seen like what it looks like in 2017 to 2018, a 1% increase, and I believe that we're going to see a significant jump, had we been able to take the STAR before the pandemic happened, how do you anticipate we're going to go from 17 to 38?
I think that's a great question. I think when you look at that 17, you say, with just one point increase from the previous year, how does that happen? I think one of the things that we have to realize is we're very intentional about bringing our students back, that while we had a different learning environment last year, our students didn't stop learning, they continued learning, maybe not in the organized environment that we have this year. We've reorganized, we have students back in our school buildings. We've been intentional about looking at where our student deficits are and putting our acceleration plans in place for students. So for me, I think it's just an understanding that we know our data, we know our students, and we're implementing our plan that we believe will get the results that we're looking for. Dr. Sorenson.
I think what I would add to that is that, and thank you for pointing out, you know, that our educators were doing everything that they could to support our students and families throughout the pandemic. And what has changed also instructionally is that our teachers this year are not doing simultaneous instruction, right? And so the ability of our educators to truly focus on the students in the classroom and who they're with every single day increases implementation of whatever it is that the curriculum is asking them to do, that the resources are aligning with, what the data is driving them to. So I think that lift off of them really speaks to the quality of instruction that can be delivered every single day in the classroom.
The next question I have is the same as what I'd asked last time. How are we feeling about our current goal progress measures? Are we thinking that they're going to be predictive of our overall goal?
I do. I think that what is important to us, and you know, we talked about this quite a bit, we anticipated the question, is that it's what we're doing with the data on a regular and consistent basis. It is not about coming to the board, although that is very important to share with you where we are, it is using actionable data on a regular and consistent basis on campuses, in classrooms, in professional learning communities, with teachers, with educators, where the magic happens. So we are tracking, monitoring, intervening, shifting, reflecting, and adjusting when we see that things are not moving in the right direction, or if they are moving in the right direction, how do we amplify that into other spaces on a campus where we're modeling good practices across a campus or across a district, so on and so forth. So I think it is about coming here and showing you data several times a year, but it is more about the day-to-day grind and the work that's happening on campuses and in classrooms and in PLCs across our district.
And trustee Ramos, if I'll just add, predictive is a good word, and I do feel like it is predictive in a couple of different ways. We're bringing you data about our earliest learners, our pre-K and kindergarten learners. And one of the things that we know is that our learners that are starting their schooling experience on level, on track, are staying on track. Our data that we've studied over the last several years tells us that, that the majority of our students who are kindergarten-ready are reading on grade level at third grade. So to be predictive, if we are looking at that data at these early grade levels, that's going to tell us what we need to know about keeping those students on track. The other predictive piece that we know is our MAP data is very correlated to our state accountability assessment. And we know, and we've shared this with this board multiple times, that the road to increased achievement is growing each individual student. And that's what this data is giving us the ability to do, is look at where each individual student is, look at the areas that we need to spend more time, and grow those students within this school year so that the end result is greater overall achievement for those students. So yes, I agree with Dr. Sorenson, it is predictive of where we think our students will be.
And then the next one I have is, what are some examples of some of the inputs that you all have pivoted or shifted to? You know, since our role as a board is to be focused on asking questions on what are the inputs that the administrative team are putting into play, can you give me like an example of, you don't have to name it by name, but like, because I'm looking at the data points of black and brown children, I'm looking at the data points of low socioeconomic, looking at the data points of special ed, and looking at the data points of economically disadvantaged. And I really do, I can appreciate that tier because of how you're describing how we get to where a student ends up with individual attention, but I mean, have we not been doing that? And if we have, what are we doing different to get better results that we maybe have not done in the past?
So I can speak to two things that we, one, that we've discussed very openly with you, is that we have, for the first time last spring, sat down and had conversations with our principals about naming areas that you're discussing, race, socioeconomic, who are the priority groups in their campus improvement plan, and tracking and monitoring those priority groups in daily interventions, instruction, how are we enhancing what's going on with those particular children, having a campus have a laser-like focus on student groups that need more, right? If we're talking about equity, that's what we're talking about. So we're naming the groups in the campus improvement plans, and then we are tracking and monitoring how those named priority groups are moving along the continuum. The other input, I would say, is, as we talked about, is our support plans for our tier four and five campuses. That again is very strategically designed to make sure that we are providing additional coaching support, additional instructional support that is aligned to the campus improvement plan, that is responsive to the data in those very specific schools where we have the highest need. So that's an input that is also different than years past, and it is very tightly aligned to the vision that the principal has around their campus improvement plan. So there was input from the campus as well as how those supports are designed and delivered.
I'll add just one more thing to that when you talk about the difference from input. It's where our focus is. We've been very intentional about our focus being high-quality daily instruction, tier-one instruction, not being distracted by, we've got to go and we've got to abandon our curriculum, our instructional plan, and get prepared for the state accountability test. Our conversation has been, no, the way that you get the achievement on that state accountability test is make sure you have high-quality instruction in every content area every day. So let's stay true to the curriculum, let's stay true to the instructional framework, let's make sure it's happening in every single teacher's classroom every single day, and we're not abandoning that plan, but we're making sure that plan is implemented with fidelity.
Trustee Ramos, are you complete? Thank you. Trustee Anne Darr.
Just a quick statement. Nobody in this room questions the importance of STAR data. But what I like is that I'm hearing quality instruction every single day, and that we're looking at the data to make sure that the kids are getting what they need every single day. Yes, STAR scores are important, but this is an ice statement. I do not believe they are the be-all and end-all of everything that we do. They are a snapshot of what children can do in a two-hour period on one day. Yes, they're important. Yes, we need to get them up, but more than anything else, we need to make sure that kids every single day that they come into that classroom are getting a quality education. And so I appreciate the emphasis on that, and I appreciate the fact that you're going to principals and you're specifically asking them, what do you need? They know their student population better than anybody else in this district, and you're asking that question and getting that information, and that's critical to making sure that we're meeting the needs of these students, of these families, and of these communities. So.
On goal, if you can, I don't know what slide is on my, on measure 2.2. Yeah, so on that one, the one before that one. Yes.
Yes.
So that 15%, we are saying that only 15% of our third-grade students who are taking the test next time are going to meet.
Great question. So to clarify, this is information based off of beginning-of-year MAP Assessment. The way students, the way that our third-grade students performed on their MAP Assessment, that performance told us that if they continue the same path where they were at the beginning of the year, that 15% of our students would meet or exceed the meets expectation standard on the state accountability test. What that tells us is if we just do what we've always done, that we're only going to have 15% of our students that meet. That also gives us those students that we need to do something additional for, something more for. How can we accelerate their learning? Which is why my comment was, the way that we judge this is at middle of year, when we give this MAP Assessment again, and we look at the same group of third-grade students, and see, are we still at 15% that are projected to meet math standard? Or did we exceed what that national norm told us, this is how we should expect growth of these students from beginning of year to middle of year? What I would tell you is that's like, that's a motivation slide for Fort Worth ISD for us right now, to say, there's no way you're going to see us come back and tell you that only 15% of our third-grade students are going to meet that meets expectation standard. That's what that slide says to me.
85% are.
Right.
Are needing help two years ago.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add one other comment to that, and that would be that for us, we have conversations with our teams all the time, as well as with our principals, around students not just meeting their growth targets, but exceeding. Because if we're just meeting growth targets, we're continuing achievement gaps. We have to exceed growth targets, so that's what we will also be tracking and monitoring to make sure that that 15% doesn't stay 15%, but that we are exceeding expected growth.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you for pinchitting for Sarah Rispe. That was, those were some big shoes. And you did a great job.
Thank you.
We are now up to consent agenda items. As board president, I'm making the following statement in accordance with board policy BBFA local. This is a reminder to all board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have for matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Are there any questions or concerns on consent agenda for any board members tonight? For the two individuals who requested to speak during an agenda item, is your item a consent agenda item? And if it is, please move forward, and you have one minute.
I am the Lilly B elevator. Am I, I'm moving forward. All right, thank you.
Our Lilly B elevators are not on consent agenda though, sir.
I'm happy to talk to you.
All right, I'll talk after, thank you.
Hey, you won the jackpot.
Mine is B7.
Is B7?
Is that good?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Go for it. Well, it's several things, though. Hi again, I'm Holly Plemmons, mother of three children in Fort Worth ISD, in Anne Darr and CJ Evans District, back again to talk to you about my utter disgust and how you waste our money. Tonight, you're voting to approve $58,000 in stickers when recess is free and proven to be more effective. Plus $1.1 million to TCU for advisors, why? When we already have the GO centers, why do we have to pay for both? If one isn't working, then cut it out. You're also voting to approve more SCL programs. We, the parents, do not want you or any other unqualified individual messing with our children's mental health. That is the job of parents and trained psychologists of the parents choosing. Quit wasting our money, invest in the basics of education that Fort Worth ISD children are so lacking. Thank you.
And the time is 7:12 PM. The date is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. We will now recess and reconvene for executive session as authorized by chapters 551 of the Texas Government Code under sections 551, 071, 2, 4, and 6.
[943.08]
In accordance with the open meetings law, this board opened the meeting at 5:30 PM with a quorum present, recessed and reconvened open session, adjourned regular session, convened executive session, adjourned executive session, and now reconvened open session at 7:57 PM with a quorum present. We're on number 14, Accept Consent Agenda Items. Do I have a motion accepting consent agenda items? Trustee Dar, do I have a second? A second from trustee Evans. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we will vote in consent agenda with Dar as the moving motion and trustee Evans seconding. We got one missing. Thank you. And the motion passes unanimously. 15A, we do not have any items removed from the consent agenda. We'll move down to personnel. Senior Officer Technology Infrastructure Chief of District Operations, do I have a motion? Trustee Ryan with the motion. Second, trustee Martinez. Any discussion? Please move to voting. The motion passes unanimously. Dr. Scribner, you have some great introductions to make.
We do, and I'm going to allow Deputy Superintendent Molinar to make this announcement.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner and board. We're very excited this evening to introduce our new senior officer, Technology Infrastructure, that will be working with Mr. Shears, our chief of technology. I'm just excited, Dr. Carrie Neal, if you could stand up and... So, Dr. Neal comes to us from Tarrant County College. Great vast experience with technology as well as a Texas Wesleyan. We're just excited to have him on board and join our technology team and look forward to having him start.
All right. No others?
With the next one.
We're voting on all of them all at the same time.
Okay, well then, great. Then I would like to also introduce our newest member of the leadership team, Dr. Joseph Coburn. He comes to us from the instructional side of the House. He's served as a middle school principal, a high school principal, director and executive director of leadership, also was the chief of schools. He served in Colleen ISD, in Austin ISD, Tyler, Louisville, and recently was a small district superintendent for three years at Decatur ISD, and he is now with us as the chief of operations focusing on our transportation, maintenance, and food services departments. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Joseph Coburn.
Welcome to both of you, and we will move on to 16, Action Agenda Items. Action Agenda Item A, approve the resolution authorizing the casting of the Fort Worth Independent School District Board of Trustees allocated votes for appointment on the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. Dr. Ryan, do you have a motion?
I move we appoint Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, trustee Luabanos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I believe we can move to voting. And the motion passes unanimously. 16B, approve qualifications of financial advisory service firms and grant authorization to negotiate and execute contract. Do I have a motion?
Can I make a motion to approve item C of the options that we were presented?
Would you state item C, please, in your motion?
Well, they're valid points, but I would like to make a motion to weigh the statement in the RFQ that the district intends to award the contract to a single firm and select two firms. Will that be okay?
Could you repeat that, please?
Well, the statement in the RFQ that the district intends to award the contract to a single firm and select two firms.
So, your motion is to move from the selection of one firm to two firms?
Yes.
And the district will make the recommendation of who the two firms are, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, trustee Luabanos has moved. Counsel, are we good with that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second, Dr. Ryan, please move to voting. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Ramos.
Yeah, you know, I was actually going to just wait and see how this thing played itself out. Part of the governance training that we do as school board members, it's called Lone Star Governance. Unfortunately, two of our colleagues have still not been able to participate in that, and there's a line that's using that training. It says, "I am the genesis of transformation," not the common pretending zone, which is that they are the genesis of transformation. I've sat here for eight and a half years and watched how this district operates, and even more specifically, how this board operates. I've watched how people have been recruited to be on this board, particularly from one side of town, how they've been funded and financed to get into the seat, and every now and then it piques its ugly head. Historically, it's been connected to a particular law firm who happens to collect our taxes. When that item came up in January, there was no questions asked. Matter of fact, good governance was referenced as, you know, this is staff recommendation, this is what we ought to go with. The hypocrisy of what I'm witnessing now is not necessarily because of just the financial firm. It's this is because this is a pattern that this board has had. A bond just passed. This won't be the last one. This board has a pattern of behind the scenes trying to dictate and determine who's going to get what. And now that we found out today that it passed, I am trying to be the genesis of transformation to say that we just had a workshop, which I'm glad that I can reference right now, on October 12th. Two of the main constraints that this board is entertaining, one is that we will not allow special interests to influence decisions. The second is that the board will not give or appear to give operational advice or instructions to district staff. We just discussed that less than a month ago. There's a reason why I pressed this board at that time, because I know the history of the board. I know the history of this community. I know the history of who finances and who funds people's campaigns, and I will gladly step in front to say that I was recruited by that same group, funded by that same group. And the only times I got in calls was when it was related to bond contracts, legal services for tax collection. And I choose to not do that anymore and to not sit here quietly. So while you think it's related to one, which interestingly enough, too, the same group that's pretty loud out here every board meeting happened to have named a firm by name that I never referenced by name. There's coordination, there's conversations being had from my assumption from this boardroom into that part of the community, and what I expected, the demonization of a brown man to speak up. The conversation is very real for me. I just feel like I got to be part of that change that we say we want for improved student outcomes, the focus on the data points, the inputs and the outputs, because at the end of the day, the board, we're responsible for the outcomes. But when we engage in this behavior and what to me appeared to be like somewhat of a coordinated move by maybe one person, maybe two, I don't want to make too many assumptions, but I want to believe in this board. And I know that the next contract that'll come up will probably be the program management, and I'm pretty sure there's going to be questions, and there might be some shenanigans there, too. It's not going to stop, board. You're going to keep getting calls when it comes to architects, engineers, construction companies. You're going to keep getting those calls, and I'm going to be the one to say every single time that we decide to play these kind of games, I'm going to speak up. So vote how you may, it's within your right as an individual trustee. I prayed a lot about it, talked to a lot of people about this conversation, about do I just step out of the way and do I just let one side of town continue to dictate? I can't do that anymore. So the history of micromanagement and my hopes is going to stop. When I reference the level of integrity, we define in Lone Star Governance integrity is telling people what to expect by when to expect it. We told this community we're going to lean into governance. My friends, this isn't governance. Thank you, President Jackson.
Thank you. Any other comments? So the motion on... Yes, trustee Evans.
Thank you so much, and thank you for bringing those constraints to our attention that we talked about. I would like to say, though, that these questions, at least for me, speaking for me, don't come because of the comment about special interests in the boardroom. These questions come from an industry outsider needing more information about big-ticket items from administration. And I'm happy to say that today, administration answered those questions to my satisfaction, and I'm going to be voting against the motion.
Trustee Phillips.
Thank you, President Jackson. So, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what it is that we're voting on now. And the motion on the floor at the moment is the CFO and the superintendent have recommended one thing, and we want to go against their recommendation to do just what we feel, basically. So if that is, in fact, what we are voting on, then I too am voting no, because that's not what they recommended, and they're telling us what they need in order to get the job done and get it done well. So unless someone is showing me something different as to why I need to just pull out my hat and decide I'm going to do something differently than what they recommended, that doesn't seem to make very much sense to me. So if that's what we're voting on, is to go against what they clearly have recommended to us, outlined to us, presented to us, and told us what they need, there's no way I can vote yes to that. That's a clear no. Thank you, President Jackson.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Any other discussion? Trustee Ramos.
Yeah, trustee Evans, I really do appreciate you saying that out loud and, you know, noting that that is not part of... And yeah, you're right, you asking questions is within our purview. Our governance model also says, right, that we would pull an item, you know, when we pull an item from the national model, we actually get penalized even more. And so, you know, you're absolutely right that you are able to ask the tough questions. It's when we deviate is what we've done with that kind of a motion, so I appreciate you saying that.
The motion on the floor is from trustee Luabanos, and the second is from trustee Ryan. I'm sorry, trustee Dar.
Yeah. Thank you, President Jackson. I guess I appreciate the report that was brought to us tonight because that did help to clarify. I felt like at the last meeting, I really didn't have a whole... Sorry, that distracted me. I... That in two pages in a board book, I didn't have the information I needed to work with. I guess I'm... My... What's weighing heavily on me is my fiduciary responsibility that the taxpayers have in electing me to sit in this seat have taxed me with the responsibility of making sure that their funds and their monies are being used effectively and responsibly. And I'm... I am still not clear as to why we would go back to one, financial advisor, instead of two for the sake of... And I understand that there needs to be a lead team. I'm on board with that. I'm on board with somebody taking the lead and somebody, and I don't care who. I don't... I mean, whoever the district decides is the most qualified candidate to be that second team, if that is what this board decides, is... I support that decision. I guess I just struggle with why would we go back to one financial advisor when we've had two to make sure that we are responsibly using and managing the taxpayers' money? That's where I'm coming from in trying to process all of the options that are on the table right now.
Thank you, trustee Dar. Trustee Martinez.
I haven't had the governance training. I think Dr. Ryan and I are the two board members that have yet to receive the Lone Star Governance training, although I do know of it and participated in the board workshop on October the 12th. And I'm glad that trustee Ramos brought up those constraints and completely agree with trustee Evans that we, you know, needed, at least it was good information to clarify, especially for new board members myself. And we asked staff to go back and prepare a presentation for us, and they did, and they came back with the recommendation. And tonight, I heard comments, and every week, or every meeting, we hear comments about the lack of trust and integrity in this board. And so, although I've yet to complete that Lone Star Governance, I know what the principles and how it's modeled and believe that, you know, the constraints that were covered in the last board workshop around, you know, not only special interests but just micromanaging staff were two that really stood out to me, and for that reason, I won't be voting on the amended agenda item because I am happy... second team, if that is what this board decides, is, I support that decision. I guess I just struggle with why would we go back to one financial advisor when we've had two, to make sure that we are responsibly using and managing the taxpayers' money? That's where I'm coming from in trying to process all of the options that are on the table right now.
Thank you, trustee Dar, trustee Martinez.
I haven't had the governance training. I think Dr. Ryan and I are the two board members that have yet to receive the Lone Star Governance training, although I do know of it and participated in the board workshop on October the 12th. And I'm glad that trustee Ramos brought up those constraints and completely agree with trustee Evans, that we, you know, needed, at least it was good information to clarify, especially for new board members myself. And we asked staff to go back and prepare a presentation for us, and they did, and they came back with the recommendation. And tonight, I heard comments, and every week, or every meeting, we hear comments about the lack of trust and integrity in this board. And so although I've yet to complete that Lone Star Governance, I know what the principles and how it's modeled, and believe that, you know, the constraints that were covered in the last board workshop around, you know, not only special interests, but just micromanaging staff were two that really stood out to me. And for that reason, I won't be voting on the amended agenda item, because I'm happy with what staff presented.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips.
Yes, to trustee Dar, to address some of those things you said. So for me, those questions are very clear, as far as why two, why one instead of two, why these other things. You know, I wasn't here, I mean, we came here at the same time, so I know we weren't here. When it originally was two in the first place, I know trustee Ramos went on the whole soliloquy last meeting about how he even got the two in the first place. I wasn't here, so how true is that? I don't know. I wasn't here, but President Jackson, trustee Ramos were both here, and that's the story I heard about how we even got the two in the first place, right? And so when we talk, what we're talking about now, about why two instead of one, I think it was outlined pretty clear. One, we're not financial experts, but what we do is we hold the superintendent accountable. And the superintendent has a chief financial officer. That chief financial officer, who is very astute in finance and understanding what's happening, has stated that this is his recommendation, because he understands that this will help him to do the job the best, right? Not only did it just simply come from him, there was a committee, there was a whole process that happened, and a committee selected the particular firm that they're recommending. The chief financial officer thought highly enough to say, you know what, I think that works, in order to tell the superintendent, I think this is the recommendation we should go with, and the superintendent has brought that forward to us now. Now, there's, now, it's not to say that we have to always just blindly vote on what the superintendent is saying, but in this particular instance, there's nothing showing in any way that this recommendation somehow is supposed to fall apart when it's been vetted by a committee. The chief financial officer has said this is what he needs, because he feels like it's gonna work best. He has brought that to his boss, the superintendent, and superintendent has brought that to the board in order for us to be able to vote. So even, and in the other instance, put in layman's terms, they don't want the headache of dealing with two. That's what I took from it. Now, I'm not putting those words in their mouth, but the two times I've heard this presentation is basically, we've had two, it's hard to determine who the lead dog is, they really wanna be able to work with one so they can actually get the job done well. So, I mean, that's what I was gathering from what was being said, and they recommended this one. The thing is, I don't have to know all that other stuff, because it's not even my lane to have to know all this stuff. That's why we have a CFO. So saying all that to say, because I know some of your concerns, and I definitely understand as well. I want, me and you are very similar in the sense that we always like to be very educated on what it is we're gonna vote for, and I appreciate you for that, because you always push me to that. It's hard to get more educated than what they did. I mean, they came and told us everything that was going on, took it off the agenda, came and did a presentation, told us what their recommendation is. And now, those of us who really don't know this, are supposed to, all of a sudden, just because we feel something different, that based on any real evidence or data or something that's gonna go wrong, decide to go against that and tell them to do something different? That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem to make very much sense. So, I mean, that's not their answer to your question, that's my answer to your question, why one instead of two? I think it's been outlined very clearly why they recommended one instead of two.
Any other comments? Let's move voting. We have seven votes.
I just wanted to be clear, so we're voting on the new motion?
Yes, we're voting on two financial advisors. The district chooses those two. And the motion ties four-four and fails.
Three yes, four no.
It's, it's, it hadn't caught up, I'm sorry, counsel. Would you like to verbally state your vote? Or will we?
I voted yes. It's on here, it's on the screen, but it's not up on that, on the TV. I don't know why. Because it says on the screen that it's a four-to-four vote.
It does. Just for transparency, maybe we can just do a voice call? Can we call each member?
Certainly. Trustee District One, Hesington Ramos.
I vote no on the amendment.
Trustee Toby Jackson, District Two, I vote yes. Trustee District Three.
I vote no, President Jackson.
Thank you. Trustee District Five. Oh, it's there. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Ramos. But we practiced roll call in case we needed it again, trustee Martinez. Okay, so the motion fails. Have, do we have another motion?
Yes.
I move that we go with the superintendent's recommendation.
I second.
Motion to go with the superintendent's recommendation by trustee Phillips. The second is from trustee Ramos. Any discussion? Please move to voting. And I'll wait for the screen to catch up. I have a four-four on this screen, and we have a five-three on the big screen.
I voted no, and it marked it as yes. It's a no on my screen. I don't know what's going on here.
Okay, we have trustee Dar. There it is. Okay, the motion fails. Four-four. Do I have another motion?
Well, President Jackson, if I may, superintendent or CFO, what are y'all suggesting?
Well, the, we're still under contract until the end of February with the current arrangement with two firms. Mr. Ball, what would you, how would you augment that, that we are, we can continue for the time being until that contract expires?
Dr. Scribner, I think the options now before us are to remain under, we, no action is needed on the board's part to stay under contract until February 27 of 2022. The option then would be to extend that for another year, or, and those are the, the two firms that the district is currently under contract with are the two, the two top firms that the committee recommended. So no action tonight really results in continuation of the relationship as is with the two firms. And if that's the board's pleasure, then no action is required, although some action would be required in February. I think if, if the board, I think that if the, certainly the administration, and I obviously don't speak for the superintendent, so please stop me if I'm out of line, Dr. Scribner, but I think, I think in order to resolve this issue, the, our recommendation could easily be changed to going with the two top firms that the committee recommended and allowing the superintendent or his designee to negotiate with those two firms, to create a situation where one of those firms is the lead advisor and the other one is sort of a support role to check those numbers, to hopefully satisfy those trustees who believe that, that that, that level of oversight is warranted. And we certainly don't disagree with that necessarily. And I think, I think it was trustee Phillips who pointed out that, yes, that is really what we were trying to say, is that both these firms are well-qualified firms, but there is a little bit of communication issue when you don't really know who's in charge. And so we don't, we don't dispute the need, or the preference, if you will, to have more oversight. And I think, I would see that as a way that everybody sort of can, each of the trustees can sort of get what I think's being, being said, but certainly that's an option that's available to the board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Do I have a motion?
Well, I mean, I guess first of all, superintendent Scribner, is that would you, would you want that third recommendation that kind of just came about, the CFO, CFO of this line?
And, no, and I appreciate Mike Ball's experience and his judgment, and however, you're right, the administration did recommend one firm on the 26th of October, and again tonight. And we will, if the board, we have two options, it seems, to keep the current arrangement, come back with a third recommendation sometime between now and the end of February, or if the board would like to consider the other option, it would obviously be the pleasure of the board to change, to consider both firms and then, and then allow our administrator, our staff and Mike's staff to enter into negotiations with those two firms and determine each, each's role.
Trustee Ramos.
Yeah, based on listening to, you know, Mike Ball again and Dr. Scribner, I mean, I just, I'd rather we just, if two's where we're gonna go, let's go there, let's let staff do what they do and do their magic, because I got a feeling we've got some other ones coming up here pretty soon. So let's, if that's, if that's one of them, let's just get this one off our table and get back to business on focusing on student outcomes.
Thank you, trustee Ramos. Do I have a motion? Trustee Phillips.
Well, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on the, I have no problem making a motion, I just wanna make sure I'm making the correct motion. And that, that motion would be, and this is not me making, I'm actually asking for clarification, to allow the superintendent and designee to enter into negotiations with the top two firms recommended by the committee. That's correct?
Yes, and trustee Phillips, I think in addition to that, if we would certainly meet with your approval, to add to your motion, I think the first motion that was made, to waive what's in the RFQ to the statement that would, the board would appoint only one firm, we would need to waive that, that requirement that's in the RFQ. And I think if we do that, if you would, if you would be okay adding that to your motion, I think it would go.
So then, for clarification, if I may, trustee Phillips, so the item, the motion would include the statement waiving one firm requirement in RFQ, and then the second would be to allow the administration to enter into negotiations with the two firms and determine each's role.
Okay. Okay, so waive one firm in RFQ, is that what you just said?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then allow the superintendent to enter negotiations with the, got you. Okay, so that's what I move. I move that we waive the RFQ. One firm requirement in the RFQ, and allow the superintendent and designee to enter into negotiations with the top two firms recommended by the committee.
Thank you. And trustee Ramos, you're on the board.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but I'll also make a comment, real brief comment after that.
Yes, sir.
But trustee Luabinos, you wanna have that second? Sure, yeah. Trustee Luabinos will be the second.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My brief statement is, we've set a precedent, my friends, so when we come up to all of these other ones, we've, we've entered into dangerous ground, no doubt probably gonna become a larger urban case study for what just happened tonight, and just wanted to publicly state that. Thank you.
Excuse me, for a point of clarification on the motion, I would like to add, well, I want to reiterate what was stated, waive the one firm requirement in the RFQ and allow superintendent to enter negotiations with the top two firms and determine their roles. I wanted to add that for a point of clarification.
That's my motion. Good job, Teresa.
Beautiful. And we have a second from trustee Luabinos. May we move to voting? The motion passes unanimously. It wasn't reading here this time. The motion passes unanimously. I want to thank each of you for the conversation, for the thought, and for the consideration. And at this time, I'll ask, does anyone have any comments? Trustee Phillips?
Thank you, President Jackson. Just a simple rest in power to Daphne Brokens.
Thank you. Superintendent Scribner, any? On that, in honor of Principal Stephen Matic and trustee Daphne Brokens, we're adjourned.